My name is Jeff McCluskey with MC Square Engineering, and I'm here with J&amp;J Custom Homes. And we wanted to talk to you a little bit about Terra Nova Subdivision, which is off of Old Monroe Road. And so here kind of gives you an aerial view of where we're at. We're just basically to the northwest, or yeah, northwest of Sun Valley Commons, like I said, off of Old Monroe Road, surrounded by Brandon Oaks, really, to the south and west. And then there's Faith Church Road, the right-of-way there, which is really more to the north of us, and then Sagecroft. This is the general site plan that we've put together that we wanted to discuss with you. Basically, what we were looking at doing was more towards the Old Monroe Road, more of like, commercial out there, in general, to the, to the north, or I guess, the northwest of Old Monroe Road. It's predominantly zoned for commercial in that area. I believe the ABC store is just a little bit to the east of us, though it's currently under construction. And then within the remainder of the development, we're looking at basically, single-family homes and townhomes. The, as it indicates on the plans, we're looking at a total of 45 single-family homes, 62 townhomes. On the residential portion of the property, that works out to be about 3.8 units per acre. So that's kind of the overview of what our site is. The other piece of this meeting is, we have had discussions with staff as far as the potential of a road connection through the town property. In the ordinance, basically, if you go over 50 units, we have to have two points of access. So we are requesting that where the town has the land there to basically continue Culpeper Way to connect into our road connection. So this way, it would actually benefit us. It would actually benefit the town and the Sagecroft townhomes as well. This way, it would give basically, two points of access to the town property there, which I'm assuming, I think, would be, I think, at this point, is geared more towards a park. I don't know if that's been completely decided, but this kind of gives the potential of the interconnection there as well. The commercial part of the site is about 1 and 3/4 acres, as we're shown on the plan. And then the residential portion is just over 28 acres as well. And then this slide here kind of gives you a typical lot for a single-family and for townhomes. Like I said, the single-family, what we tried to do, as you can see on the previous slide here real quick, was we were buffering against Brandon Oaks to have common open space between us and them. And then we would have the single-family lots around the perimeter adjoining other single-family lots. And then more internally, we were doing a little bit higher density with the townhomes. It's more of a cluster development, you would say, from the standpoint of the amount of open space that we're proposing on the site. The townhome lots that we're proposing are similar to Sagecroft size. They would be a rear-loaded alley product. And so there would be the garages in the rear. And then in the front, they would be basically, you know, your standard front porches and other pieces like that. These are to give you some ideas of some of the elevations that we're looking at. And I actually have Claudia here with me as well, who's going to talk a little bit more about the elevations and kind of what we're proposing here as well. So this is the single-family, and this would be more of like a townhome. So if you want to...
So basically, what we're hoping to achieve is Brandon Oaks, but a little bit more modern, right? Some of the materials perhaps will be brick, concrete slab, the concrete front porches, for sure, HVAC heat pumps, the shingles, GAF 30-year architectural asphalt shingles. I have a list. I can't say for sure on everything, because obviously, I need to determine how many lots is going to yield first. But basically, we want a nice, clean, modern product that will fit Indian Trail. And that's all I have.
I think from a presentation standpoint, I think we have 15 minutes. So I wanted to obviously give the council and mayor time to ask any questions, and hopefully, we can give you some feedback on that.
So the elevation that we're looking at is for the single-family, right?
Those would be single-family, yes.
All right, I'm going to assume a two-car garage there?
They are two-car garages, yes.
All right, what about the townhomes? If we can go to that elevation?
So I do know that the town has an ordinance as far as the two-car, and yes, our townhomes would have two-car garages.
And this is the front you're showing of the townhome or the rear?
This would be the front.
This would be the front. So parking in the back as well?
Correct, they are rear-loaded, yes.
All right, and two, two spots?
We, yeah, I do know the ordinance requires two, and we would have two.
All right, good. If you were to get this approved, let's say you bring, you go through the process, all the approvals, when would you look at construction? When would you think of getting this started?
So the biggest thing is, I'm sure you're probably aware, Union County Public Works has issues with sewer capacity.
Let's just assume that these guys, they get it together and there's capacity.
So from that standpoint, our intent is, based on the discussions we've had with the town staff, and then also with Union County Public Works, is our, we're planning on basically moving forward regardless of the sewer capacity issue, because from our understanding is, it's more or less a first-come, first-served. If they don't have it, we're put on the shelf. Once the capacity is available, we're next in line, or whoever's next in line. So from that standpoint, from a timing, assuming no capacity issues, we go through the rezoning, you approve that, we would do the full construction plans. I would say, based on the time and everything, we would probably be looking at first, second quarter of 2022.
All right.
Jerry? No, we're good.
So we're good overall, no other comments?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, sounds good. Well, thank you for your time.
Unless Mr. Cohen wants you to go through the whole presentation over.
Yes, if you don't mind.
Sure. What we'll do, if anybody has any questions, they'll get to the town manager and the planning director, and they'll get back to you, give you some more feedback.
Okay.
So therefore, you can sort of get a feel.
Do you want to see the whole presentation?
Okay, all right, but thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We'll just recess for 20 minutes. I'd like to bring the Indian Trail Town Council meeting for Tuesday, August 24, 2021, to order. As a reminder, if you have a cell phone, please put it on silence. And if you must take a call, please step outside. Everyone, please rise for Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. At this time, is there any additions or deletions to the tonight's agenda? Town manager?
None that I'm aware of, sir.
Counsel, none. Okay, if there aren't any, I will need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
Mr. Cohen's made the motion by show of hands. The records show it was unanimous. Also for the record, let the record show that Councilmember Barber could not make it tonight. First up will be a presentation for tooth town dentistry for kids. Are you here? Come on up to the podium. So at this time, we'd like to welcome new businesses and give you a minute or two to tell us where you're at, what you do.
Thank you. And... I bought some goodies for you guys. Make it fun a little bit and colorful here, so, you know.
Aren't you a pediatric dentist?
We are a pediatric dentist.
And you've got it for the right group of people.
There's pens in there for you guys, but there's some T-shirts and for your little ones, nephews, kids, anyone that you guys have. May I give this to you right now, or?
So good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor Alvarez. Thanks for having me, and all council members. My name is Dr. Zoe Munaf. I currently opened a pediatric dental office with my partner crime spouse, Dr. Khan, who couldn't be here today, childcare. We, our address, our office address is 4514 Old Monroe Road, Suite C in Indian Trail. Our phone number is 704-313-4000. We provide access to care for infants all the way to adolescents up to age 21 years of age. Establishing a dental home as young as infant, seven months, is very important in a child's life to go over habits, tooth brushing, and keeping up with oral hygiene. We provide any service from sedation dentistry, all the way from cleaning, as easy as that's cleaning. We do any restoration. I also see special needs, kids, even adults sometimes, who can't have access to care. We've been trained very well as pediatric dentists to provide that kind of service to our community. Other than that, I graduated from Nova Southeastern University Dental School in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, Sunshine State. Went to do my pediatric residency at NYU Langone in Brooklyn, New York, for two years, and also did a master's in biomedical science and concentration oral biology. And I'm very happy to be here with Dr. Khan to provide service to the Indian Trail community and all of his community members. That's why I...
Welcome.
Thank you.
Come on up here, real quick. This has a welcome token from the community, or from the council. Welcome, wish you many years of success in Indian Trail. I don't have to smile.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, doctor. Bear with me one moment, please. At this time, I'd like to open up the public comments. Thank you for your interest in communicating with the Indian Trail Town Board. Comments will be recorded and can be heard on the internet. Please note the following rules when addressing the Indian Trail Town Council. Each speaker has three minutes to speak to council. Please elect one speaker for groups whenever possible regarding the same message. Comments should be directed to all council members and not to specific individuals. Speakers are to remain respectful and reasonable, respectful with reasonable standards of civility. Anonymous emails will not be read. Written public comments will be read for a restricted period of 20 minutes. Then emails will be noted as opposing or supporting. Any grievances regarding staff should be communicated to the town manager or town attorney and not aired in this forum. Meeting facilitator may discontinue and/or disallow the speaker to continue if rules are violated. And all documents provided will become town property and will be available to the public. Our first speaker.
Tonight, I appear before the council and the community to make you aware why we're bringing our perceived acts of discrimination against us to the public's attention. On four previous occasions, we asked for a private conversation with the town manager. Our requests for that meeting were met with two prerequisites. One, we had to present questions in advance. And two, the town attorney had to be present. I'd like to know from residents who may have had conversations with this town manager, or any in the past, if any such constraints were placed on them. I know for a fact that residents have always had an open door to town hall and could walk in unannounced and have an audience with the town manager. So why now, and why this ask? Only because we are people of color? It is also a known fact that any time the attorney is contacted, it becomes a billable event. So again, why is this manager so quick to spend taxpayers' money when his duties entail meeting with the public? After our first complaints about inequitable practices in hiring, retention, and promotion, we are informed that the town is now taking steps to remedy some of those issues. I know that a diversity trainer was hired and conducted an hour-and-a-half training for staff. In my role as a trainer, the shortest time allocated to such training for a department is typically one-half day, and for an entire organization, two days. I am informed that two new hires of black employees took place in the town, one of whom is custodian. As a former cultural competence trainer and educator, the areas of highest concentrations of black employees in schools historically have been among cafeteria workers and custodial staff. Corporate America has shown similar hiring patterns to boost diversity numbers. The town has shown little incentive to find and recruit talent beyond its traditional avenues of recruitment, therefore, hiring people of little diversity and hindering access to equity and inclusion. Among our town residents, little attempt has been made to meet, acknowledge, and include people of color in promotional materials and communications. One example is a previous flyer for summer programs and activities. Unfortunately, the photos taken and chosen represent town-sponsored events catered to one class of citizens. It is not uncommon for black town employers to hear black town residents say upon meeting them that they had no idea the town employed black people, and were very pleased to have the positive interaction. We have previously mentioned the failure to hire anyone of Spanish-speaking ability to serve the large and ever-growing Spanish-speaking businesses and residential populations. One of the council members spoke openly of a situation with the sheriff's department when the officer had to deal with a Spanish-speaking family, and the officer did not have the language skill to set the communication, to communicate effectively. We have made suggestions to work with the town to provide translation-interpreting services, but to no avail. We also sent information to the council and town manager about the local and regional government alliance on Race and Equity, GRE, and the National Association of Development Organizations, based in Washington, DC.
That's my signal? Yes, sir. All right, thank you. Our next speaker, is that Burgess? Did I get that correctly?
Yes. I too, I'm going to speak on diversity, following up with my uncle, Mr. Chang. We have heard nothing from anyone at the town about connecting either organization to learn about or work being done on local municipalities on diversity, equity, or inclusion. I quote from Joe McKinney, member of the Adversary Council and executive director of the National Association of Development Organizations. Equity, inclusion, and diversity are values, not programs or policies. And it's never too late to change or strengthen these values. Effective equitable decisions are not made at city council meetings. They're made throughout the process of creating and implementing public policy. Public employees may have an inclusive mindset throughout. According to the recently released U.S. Census Bureau, the Charlotte area is becoming more diverse. New census data show that some of the fastest shifts happening are in the suburbs. The Asian population in Union County increased by 193%. They are the first and second-largest percentage increases in the Asian population among the state's 100 counties. Among other racial, ethnic groups in Union County, the Latino-Hispanic population grew by 44%, the black population by 15%, and the white population by 7%. Our call for change in the hiring, retention, and promotion of a diverse workforce would allow Indian Trail to attract needed talent and help to grow both the residential and commercial markets. People from different cultures and linguistic populations are coming here without any marketing. One needs to ask what would happen if there was an intentional and directed plan to place in place to make Indian Trail a business-friendly town, as it was recognized as a family-friendly town in 2009 by Family Circus Circle Magazine. It all starts with the council and the quality of its administration. After decades of failure, companies are now being forced to acknowledge the need for well-thought-out plans and develop and retain people to ensure equity and give all employees a sense of belonging. Expectations are changing. CEOs and HR leaders alike are being asked by their teams, customers, and shareholders to commit to increasing diversity. They need to not only hire, but retain a diverse workforce and measure diversity at all levels, including leadership, executive, and board roles. Stakeholders are demanding that companies increase racial and ethnic diversity, resulting in a renewed focus on candidates who are black, indigenous, and people of color. With mounting pressure, leaders are examining how to increase all types of diversity, including but not limited to gender, identity, sexual orientation, age, ability, and neurodiversity. Thank you.
Thank you.
So for two months, I have been sending emails that have been unresponded to and not even acknowledged. And all I wanted was an answer to a simple question. And so I'm going to read that into the record, since the mayor over a month has refused to read this email that I sent to him over a month.
Can you please state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Mayor and Town Council.
Jonathan, you were asked to state your name and address. Do it, or I'm going to remove you from the town comments.
You know my name.
No.
It's on the record. It's already on the record.
Okay, your time is up.
Mr. McLaurin has...
Your time is up.
...has informed me that I have to address the whole council. So, Town Council, please answer the following question, one by one.
Jonathan?
For your council feedback to public comments...
Jonathan, your time is up, please stop.
Yes or no? Do you support the Day of Healing Prayer and Reflection proclamation
Jonathan, are you going to stop, or are you going to be removed from the meeting?
...read on 6/19/2020, which reads in part, "Whereas I, Mayor of Indian Trail, Members of Indian Trail Town Council, and Indian Trail Town Staff, pause to recognize the senseless and tragic death of George Floyd on May 26, 2020." So, yes or no? Do you support that proclamation? Do you support the proclamation?
Okay, you know what, Kevin, it's okay. Yes, I support that proclamation of a Day of Peace and Unity that was brought forth before the council.
I ask, I ask the whole council, I expect an answer from each one.
If they're willing to answer.
Mayor, this is public comment, there is no requirement.
Well, he's the last one to speak, his time is up. So we're going, I'm going to move over to council comments.
All right, if the board is, if the board agrees, they can take the question.
Your time is up, I'm going to move over to council comment, reply to comments.
I have no comments.
Mike? David?
What is the question, Jonathan?
The question is, yes or no? Do you support the Day of Healing Prayer and Reflection proclamation that Mayor Alvarez read on 6/19/2020, which reads in part, "Whereas I, Mayor of Indian Trail, Members of Indian Trail Town Council, and Indian Trail Town Staff, pause to recognize the senseless and tragic death of George Floyd..."
Okay, I support it, I support that.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to pause this for one moment, so that people understand. There's rules for public comments. Writing your name by not writing your name violates those rules. You're to be acknowledged as transparent as you expect us to be.
I went to the sign-up, and the town clerk is a witness to it.
He did sign up.
He did sign up?
He requested, that's why I wrote his name, but I...
I asked him if the previous line, the blank line, was him, and I thought he said it was not, that's why I said, "Ask who that is." But I did write his name down in the fourth line.
Okay. I stand corrected and apologize. At this time, I'll close public comments. Captain?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I only have one reminder for you, and that's about the rabies clinic that Mr. Barber had asked me to remind you of. 6:30 to 8:00 on the 31st of August over at Union Prep, and this $10 cash. Outside of that, I don't have anything for you tonight.
Thank you.
I'd be glad to answer any questions if you got any.
Any questions? Bring us to the consent agenda, there's nothing to be removed. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Mr. Morris has made a motion by show of hands, all in favor. The records show that was unanimous. Bring us to public hearing, Sheffield. We zone 88 acres for 71 single-family homes. Who is presenting?
Ms. Dees should be up here to present in just a second. Let me go get her mayor, I'll be right back.
Adam's not here, is he? He said a solid waste, didn't come back, but...
Brandy, we couldn't start the meeting without you.
So sorry, good evening, Councilman Mayor. The streaming's a little delayed, so I apologize for my tardiness. Okay, our one public hearing for tonight is Sheffield Conditional Rezoning CZ 2021-0041. It's located in the 7,500 block of Indian Trail Fairview Road. Backs up to the common open space for Anandale and Fieldstone Farms. So this request is conditionally rezoned approximately 88 acres from single-family SF1 to single-family SF5. The applicant is Kenneth Holbrooks with Providence Bayor Group, and the intent again is for 71 single-family homes. Here you have an aerial map of the property. You see the star identifying the property. Again, this backs up to Fieldstone Farms in Anandale, just down from the corner of Rocky River Road and Indian Trail Fairview. Here's a photo of the site looking south into the property from Indian Trail Fairview Road. Existing zoning in light beige is the SF1. You can see to the north in the green is county zoning, R840. And then to the south, you've got a little bit denser SF5 with Brayburn, Bontera, Anandale, Fieldstone Farms. So an interesting situation here, the future land use map does not identify this property. It is instead in between the Rocky River Village Plan. You can see on the map where the star is, it's just outside of the Rocky River, and then just outside of the Goose Creek. So looking at the details of this request, the property is a vacant former farmland with quite a bit of floodplain. The concept plan, again, calls for 71 single-family homes. Although it's not identified in the future land use plan, it does meet several goals of the comprehensive plan. And here is the concept plan. The homes are fronting the northern portion of the property, leaving the flood... The homes are fronting the northern portion of the property, leaving the floodplain to the south undeveloped. The engineer for the project notified us on Friday that they were working ahead and actually have already received the results of the wetland study. This will require that the proposed greenway be constructed slightly north of its current location. You received an email about this on Friday, but we felt it important to make that revision quickly so that the information before you tonight that you vote on is complete and accurate. Along with the new greenway, so everything stayed the same, but with the new greenway, you have additional connections. So, now you have three connections to the greenway. So, I'm just going to flip back. The original greenway is more linear, and this new one is a little bit to the north and has some curvature in it, just staying out of the wetlands as required. Here's some sample architecture of what the product will look like. The applicant has exceeded parking by providing a minimum of 20-foot driveway width, two-car garages for each unit in addition to the driveway spaces. Although the numbers for this project did not warrant a traffic impact analysis, the applicant will be required to install traffic improvements per NC DOT in the town's requirements. Consistency statement, this development is just outside of the Rocky River and the Goose Creek Village Plan. Though not technically identified in the future land use plan, it does meet several of the comprehensive plan's goals through land use and housing, infrastructure and parks and rec, and open space and natural environment. Two community meetings were held on July 8 of this year, and two citizens participated. Comments included general questions about the conditional rezoning process and mentioned school traffic on Indian Trail Fairview Road. In summary, this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan in that it promotes the goals as mentioned previously, land use and housing, open space and natural environment, and infrastructure and parks and rec. This is a reasonable request, and staff has several conditions suggested. The first five, I won't bore you with, these are the standards that we apply to pretty much every project. Six through 13 are tailored for this project, and they include a 10-foot hard-surface greenway that's identified in the comprehensive plan and as a part of the Carolina Thread Trail. The applicant has openly agreed to these conditions and can sign the consent as required by law. The one thing that I do want to let you know, the town attorney did advise us to modify number 12 on the conditions, just to clarify that the applicant would be constructing that. So, I'm just going to read that modification quickly. Dedicate a 20-foot wide easement to the town of Indian Trail and construct at the applicant's expense a 10-foot wide paved or concrete greenway as shown in the concept plan. And again, the applicant has signed for that. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have, and we have the development team here for a quick presentation as well. Thank you.
Marcus, any questions?
No, not for Brandy, no.
Mike? David?
I'm assuming that it's five houses per acre. Is that correct? Is that...
So, the SF5 is 8,000 square feet. What you see in condition number eight is a reduction of that, so there's an average of 6,200 square feet for the lots. But SF5 is where it fits best.
Number nine, accurate, 3.09 units per acre, so it's three.
Correct. So, you've got a lot of floodplain, but then we have to consider, what is the actual size of that lot that they're going to sell that homeowner, and that floodplain isn't included in that? If that makes sense.
Did I answer your question, David?
It does. It does. How do you get .9 in a...
Very technical math.
Jerry, any questions?
Yeah, so part of the conditional is allowing the 8,000-square foot to be reduced to 6,200 to accommodate more.
That's correct. So, it's similar to like a cluster. So, you have, you know, if you look at it, you've got 88 acres and 71 homes, but you're actually looking at the size of the lot that you plowed.
And they wouldn't have been able to build on the floodplain anyways, correct?
They could. They could in portions of it. It's more expensive. So, you can't build in wetlands, but in floodplain, you can. But typically, people don't because of the expense.
Any questions for the developer?
Well, the developer has a presentation, right?
Oh, you have a presentation?
If you don't mind.
Sure.
I'll make it somewhat brief, since Brandy has visual hit most of the high spots. I'm Ken Holbrooks. I'm here on behalf of the development team. My address is 1108 Industrial Drive, Matthews, 28105. And real quick, I do want to thank you guys for allowing us to come here. I'd love to answer some of the questions that just came up a minute ago, so that Brandy's not on the hook for that, and staff who's been working with us, quite honestly, for about a year on this project, so we appreciate their help. Before I get started, I do want to point out, my team, Tim Coe is my business partner, and Tom Waters will discuss our group a little bit in a minute. And then, we have Weston Bowles from WK Dixon, who's here on behalf of the engineering and land planning side, so if we have technical questions, he may be able to answer those. Let me make sure I remember how to do this. So, we are here talking about Sheffield. There we go. That's the right direction. So, we are private Baird, that's the joint venture, the three of us, that is doing this project. We have been in Indian Trail before. We are throughout the Charlotte area. We have completed many projects that I think is best described on this next slide. I won't bore you with the details, but I'm a little bit younger than my two partners, but between the three of us, we have, these are just a few of the awards and communities that we've done around the Charlotte area together, or sometimes separate, and shows you a little bit of the girth that we have here. We have, basically, we are charlatians. We work here. We've had opportunity to go elsewhere, and we love it here and are very proud of the things that we do in this area that we and our families see. As Brandy pointed out a minute ago, and we'll get to some of the more numbers calculations, I don't want to bore too much, and I forget, you guys are looking on a screen, so me pointing doesn't necessarily help. The lime green, I guess for me, is our property. She's right. We were in a tweener area. The portion on the north side of the road there really is an ETJ area for you guys, but because of sewer, we worked with Union County Public Works for two years on trying to figure out that side, and it's still not capable, so we decide to only do this portion of the assemblage on the sewerable side, and that is in between two of your districts. We worked with staff, and because of what is around us in terms of SF5, including the fact our lots are actually, most of our boundary is up against Fieldstone Farms, and we're actually larger lots than, they're SF5, but we're a little bit deeper lots than they are, so we felt very comparable. If you look at what we're surrounded by in terms of open space, et cetera, you can see how we have buffered against those properties as well. Frankly, between our public hearing, which was four hours, I think it was two two-hour hearings, we really were trying to flush out as much as we could from the community then. At our planning board meeting, we ended up having a lot of the surrounding public here to ask questions, because they wanted to follow up on that. We were able to address their comments, concerns, and eliminate those, and as you see, we have no one here tonight, because I think we have satisfied those concerns at this point. So, we're very happy with where we are in the process. Let's talk for a minute, since it came up. Lots of math. Everybody does it differently, so let's hit a few things. So, in our typical world, and I'm not here to sell you a number, at 71 lots, 88 acres. So, that's one density, okay? You guys, maybe rightfully so, calculate based on just what is under the roads, the lots, et cetera, and then do a density. The reality is, we could have, and I know y'all can't see now, you may have to turn around, we could have gone further. Not only could we have gone the floodplain, but there is other acreage that we could have used, and we did not use, because we felt like this property, part of what we're selling, and these are going to be rather nice, expensive homes, more expensive than the surrounding area, and for that to happen, we went out of our way with the land planning efforts of WK Dixon, and 85% of the houses in here back up to open space, back up to trees, back up to something other than another lot. And that was important for us. And so, are the lots, although the same size as others, maybe smaller, as Mr. Morris said a minute ago, they are than acre lots, but this is the size lots that the market wants, and once again, we're going to be selling 400 and some thousand-dollar houses or more by the time this is done. So, we could have done more houses here. We didn't. We thought this was the best use of the land plan. The other comment that came up a little bit was, we did go ahead, and we thought it was right. A lot of this project's going to be sold as an environmental project, based on how we're doing water quality, how we have the floodplain, how we're utilizing that. There is a, not just the Carolina Thread Trail, but a lot of trails already put in place between Bonterra and others, and the Bonterra Trail actually comes up through what's known as affectionately as the Boy Scout Camp on the left side of your screen, and connects to our property, and we wanted to make sure it was a usable, correct property. So, originally, as a placeholder, we had the line going just across the side of the power easement. As we were able to go back and get a more environmental assessment from our consultants, they gave us, this is the best utilization of where to put the trail. It's actually a little bit longer, ended up meaning an extra trailhead, which was a good thing and a positive for our community to be able to use that. Also on that, you know, and that is an amenity, and I think condition, I can't remember if it was 12 or 13, actually states, okay, but don't call that your amenity. There has to be another amenity. Well, good. We like that as well. It's probably not large enough to do a swim tennis-type thing, but what we did was, we felt like the demographic for the community needs to have other things. So, in the top right-hand portion, once again, I know you're looking at the screen, where it says COS, closer to kind of the word site plan, that area is going to be where we put our mail kiosk, where we're going to put benches, where we're going to put parking for people to come in. It's a community gathering spot. It's crazy, probably most of you here have a mailbox. That's a weird, novel idea today, because the mail system doesn't want you to have a mailbox anymore. It's easier and less expensive for them to deliver mail this way. So, the industry is in general, and certainly our group, has embraced, hey, let's make that an amenity where people gather. Walk your dog up there in the evening, pick up your mail, talk to your neighbor, and have a little bit more community. So, that would be one end of the spectrum. On the other, down at the other area where it says COS, that actually grew a little bit, and it goes down closer to where the pathway is. Not that matters, it's all open space anyway, but we're going to amenitize that area with a playground and other equipment in there to kind of go along with that trailhead. So, if we need to come back to the site plan, I will, but the next picture kind of shows you more of, there's a sample of what we might put in the play area, such we've got an area that kids within the neighborhood could go as well, or if it ends up being grandparents who live in the area, they can have a place to walk their kids and take them. The other is representative of our monumentation and how we might designate the community. This community really has very little frontage along Indian Trail Fairview Road, so we're having to spend some effort to try to make sure it's marked correctly in that area, people notice it, it's landscaped correctly, but yet we're making sure that we abide by the DOT and site distance as well. So, that's why you'll see these pictures for the entrance monumentation. On the architecture, this is a representative sample. I think one of the conditions as well says we're going to at least hit this or exceed it. We feel very comfortable with that. The expenses, the community's going to make it that way. All of our, you know, as part of the, Mr. Morris's comment of the trade-off for a conditional zoning, which is something that you as a town now want to have happen or ask to have happen, just like many of the other towns, is that trade-off of the conditional zoning, is you ask for architectural things and certain bars and standards, et cetera, for us to check off box-wise that we do or exceed in your code. So, this actually does that. We've gone through this at length with staff to make sure that we're hitting above and beyond on those things. Raised elevations will be some of it, porches, usable porches, percentages of those, extra different facade materials, ins and outs, things that, once again, are in your ordinance or request, and so we've tried to make sure that the six on here are representative of what we'd be building and hit all of those marks. And I think we're six or seven of the 11 that are asked for, and they're on all of the houses. So, that was the purpose for showing the conceptual architecture. On this, probably, this was from previous, I doubt everybody wants to know exactly how the trail system is put in place. This is a guidance for, on the right-hand side, more of the technical aspects of how the trail has to be built, and that's what that condition stipulates. And then, on the left, it's really showing the overall global portion of the trail system and how it ultimately would connect, and where we are in the process. We're part of the green line under, right about where it says North Fork on here. Otherwise, this gets back to, we had a great community meeting, we've had great staff comments, we had a unanimous, wonderful, perceived planning board meeting and good comments from the public that we've addressed, and obviously, we're here today on the 24th. So, I've spoken quickly. I know you probably each may have some questions, and I'm here for that as well.
Jerry?
How many access points does this build have?
That is a great question, actually. So, we have one access point. By fire code, you're typically over a certain number, area jurisdictions definitely require to have two, and I appreciate you asking that, because I did not point that out. Sorry, I have to almost turn around, because if you look at the last cul-de-sac, there's a dotted line that comes off of it, and then it goes behind the lots and then back up to Indian Trail Fairview Road. That is actually, there's actually a out parcel to the far left of the property that the sellers of the property to us sold to Union County Public Works for an equalization tank, which will eliminate some of the sewer issues in the area for the lift station at Bonterra. Can't remember the name of it, but we always call it the Bonterra Lift Station. That's at the bottom of the property. That lifts, that equalization tank has to have a access point, and so we're utilizing their gravel path access point as our second ingress or egress, or really what's an emergency ingress, egress for fire or ambulatory service if that need arises. So, does that answer your question?
It does. So, we have a requirement that we have more than one entrance when there's a certain level of or quantity of houses and the whatnot for fire and police services. Is that adequate for fire and police services, or is that...
That's a great question. So, we've got a couple of things that cause conflicts. If you look at the road frontage that they have, they don't meet the requirements for distance and separation for NC DOT. So, Todd and I had a conversation about this. The intent of the Unified Development Ordinance, when it requires that second entrance for greater than 50, is for emergency access, and this does meet Union County's requirements. Now, that decision, if it was 150 units, probably wouldn't have been made, but because it was a lot closer to 50, it does meet the county's requirements, and we feel it meets the intent of the code as well.
Did I answer your question?
It was an answer, yes.
It was an answer.
Yes.
David?
I have a question. You mentioned how much the houses are, what kind of price range are you talking about?
At this point, if they were sold today, and we all know that this is probably two years from having the first house sold, they'd be in the 4s. They're obviously not going down in price between now and then, so I can only tell you that's where they'd be today. We had the benefit of having two communities ahead of us. I think one of them's gone through the process and passed, and the other one's been delayed, but both of those had smaller lots than us, and we were talking to them, because, you know, it's an industry. They were already saying theirs were going to be in the 400,000s and telling us we were crazy, we were going to be in the 5s. I don't know, I can only tell you for the moment that we think that's where we'd be for the start.
You said what? I didn't know.
400,000s, 450 on, 450 to 550 is, I think, where we think we'd be now.
Okay. And I noticed that, that was a beautiful picture you showed of the neighborhood. I thought that was a great picture.
This one?
The, at the beginning, right there.
Yes, sir.
Now, I happen to know that land fairly well. There's not a tree or a bush or anything on it, and that looks great, but, and I think that's a beautiful neighborhood, but I think that that's a long way from being what you're going to have because of the trees. So, what are you planning on putting in there to make it look like that neighborhood?
In terms of planting trees back, I mean, I think if you look at this community, these trees back here would represent, I mean, very similar to us coming off of Indian Trail Road here, and then those would be the open space behind. These trees here, for the most part, are planted trees. A few of these are at the entrance themselves, so I don't think this is very different. This just happens to be street trees that have grown over time, and these are, I mean, this is a Leland bank that's been put in to just buffer these two houses. So, we feel very comfortable that we'd be able to meet or exceed this in the five, 10 years that this has been growing by the time this picture's taken. So, we'd be putting in similar street trees and similar landscape packages in the backs of the houses. I mean, people are going to demand that, but once again, if you look at our site plan, what we find great about... what we find great about it, and sorry, once again, you can't see what I'm pointing to, but, I mean, most of these houses back up to trees already. What few back up to each other, that's where we're having to look. How are we going to do that? We've already been playing around with how we would deal with that grade-wise and plant back. But there's not a lot of trees in that area now. We don't have the tree layer on here, but it's a farm. I mean, I think the picture that Brandy showed, showed that. So we're already having to play the re-nooting of the denuding that was there from farm.
There's no trees there now. There's none.
I mean, there are some trees on the property, but I mean, in the area we're building, there are no trees. It's all farm. So, I mean, the Tomberlins have been, and Cunningham's have been farming that thing for three generations. I didn't bring the list tonight. They had something they wanted me to read in about how they've been here for three generations farming it. So it hadn't been treed since the 19 teens, I think they said. So I don't know if that, does that help answer the question?
Somewhat, yeah, it does. I just was curious. Some of those were very large trees, and I don't expect you to put those large trees in there. Like you said, it was probably 10 years old, that neighborhood, the picture you've got there. So, and it takes time to have a neighborhood like that. The thing I, the thing I do notice in neighborhoods is when there is no trees, I love the neighborhood I live in, and I've seen, seen our neighborhood grow. I've lived there 16 years from, for the trees that were planted. Trees make a, pardon me. You know, I had that on. Trees make a neighborhood. They, they make a neighborhood beautiful.
I absolutely agree.
I apologize again.
You're a very busy man.
Turn that off.
I mean, that's why, I mean, one of the comments that came up from the Philstone Farms folks, they were asking, one of them was up against the creek on the back, and their question was, can we see your houses? And we said, I can't tell you for sure, but I can tell you there's 400 feet of trees between you and me. And so, and that was another 200 feet to the lot. So half of our lots have 600 feet of tree or other area behind them. So we are putting trees into the lots. We are putting trees, once again, especially in those areas where we're trying to, I mean, back to your picture, I mean, the one area where there's, you can see between the houses, they've planted trees to try to buffer that. That will be something we will be doing as well. Some of that's ordinance-driven. Some of that's just market-driven. You can't sell a house of this magnitude and not have that kind of scenario happen. So hopefully that helps.
But anyway, thank you for answering that question. I don't think I have any more questions. Anybody? Mike?
Was there a school study done?
Oh, there was, yes. Do you want me to speak to that, or you want to speak to that? I don't have it in front of me, sorry. There was a school study done for the property. I mean, we paid for it. We do school studies on our own outside of this, and we were very pleased with what we provided, so.
Susan Klap provided that school study. Any units over 50 units are required to do the school study. Predicted that it would be 31 elementary, middle, and high school students from this development.
While you're still there, if you don't mind, and I don't mean to cut into you. We talked, you talked a little bit about the road. What did, what kind of study did we have done for? But I don't know if we talked about what they were going to do. What are you going to do there?
As far as traffic improvements?
Right.
So I'll let the developer or Mr. Huntsinger speak to that. But vaguely, it did not require a traffic impact analysis because of the number of trips generated from these units. But they are still required to make improvements per DOT in the town, such as, you know, turn lanes and things of that nature.
Excuse me. I do have a question, if we can go back to piggyback off of what Mr. Cohen is asking.
Sure.
If we can go back to one of the slides. So this one.
Okay.
This one is fine. So the entrance is really, so I know this road. I travel it a couple of times a week, go ahead into soccer. So right where the entrance is, is really around a corner there. And that corner right now, the road is not wide enough. Now, that's not up to you. That's DOT. That's their road. But it'll be interesting to know what type of improvement would go on there. So I cannot tell you what the traffic counts are. But when I travel the road, maybe five, six in the evening, seven in the evening, I don't find a lot of cars on there. But I do know people who live in that area and who use that. Instead of coming across the Poplin, they use that to get across down to Hemby and so forth. So what type of, and I know this doesn't illustrate it, you know, clearly, but asking you, what type of improvement is going to go there? Because I know some things are required by the DOT. You don't have to do a traffic study for traffic counts. But in terms of the actual road, what is going to, what improvements are you going to have to make there? One, I do understand that if you do have to make improvements, you're probably going to have to widen the corner and so forth. But is that something that you're going to take into consideration? Is that something that you have to do? If so, what would it entail, if you don't mind explaining?
Absolutely. All very good questions. And sorry, I went cutting her off. I actually was whispering across to my engineer back there to make sure, and Todd, everybody did nod their heads. So you're correct on every front there. Whenever you do any entrance, forget if this one or one you know, we have to go in, forgetting the TIA, and there's an engineering standard. It really comes down to site distance, which comes down to speed and just literally what it says, seeing it. So the engineer has to work with NC DOT and the town outside of us to make sure the site distance, the speed, everything makes sense at that point. So our anticipation, well, first of all, we have to do a 100-foot left turn lane in to make sure that when you're going to soccer in the evening to the school up there, I'm guessing, we're not used to go there, and literally someone's turning in the neighborhood, probably not from that direction, but if they were, you could continue by in the through lane while they could turn left and not create an accident at that point. This came up at the last meeting because all the property owners there, who by the way are related at some level to the owners of this property, didn't mean they're necessarily always for it, but they asked similar questions. So they have to go in and probably soften that curve. I'm a reformed engineer, so I know just enough to be dangerous there. And if you really need all the technical details, Weston or Todd could probably speak more to it. But they're going to have to soften that curve and make sure that the site distance and the way that's smoothed through there makes sense. New asphalt, et cetera, wider lanes, redoing some of the asphalt. It's already poorly done there, so.
Two turn lanes either direction?
It'll be left turn lane. It will not be a D cell lane, which is what you typically have in there.
So if you're coming in from Hemby side and you're turning in, you just turn in?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Sorry, David.
I mean, am I correct on that?
What road?
The entrance, the entrance to the neighborhood, what road is that?
That's Indian Trail. So if you come out from the roundabout, not heading, you pass Porter Ridge, you pass the Ridge Road, and you go down to the second roundabout, and you make that turn, and you head in towards Hemby Bridge. So in other words, if you were to leave your neighborhood, come out to my neighborhood.
Go the roundabout, make, do the roundabout and head up.
And head up.
Porter Ridge. Head towards Porter Ridge.
You head towards Porter Ridge, then you get to the second roundabout. You make a turn again, and you head into a, like, you're going towards Hemby Bridge Elementary.
Right.
And then when you get there, there's a, there's one, your second corner. So the first corner is a left turn corner, sort of. Second one turns right. It's that second corner on the left side of the road. That's where the property is there.
That's right.
That answers my question.
I don't know if the map on here helps a little bit more. You can see the town of Hemby Bridge and where you kind of come down Idrawa. I think it turns into Seacrest Shortcut at that point. And if you turn left coming from 485 and went around, past the school, around that curve where the graveyard is and the school site on the left-hand side, you come around that curve, and it's the next curve on the right.
Very good. And you probably spoke of this. This may be more for Brandy. How did the residents in the area?
So we had two members of the community that spoke during the community meeting. We had a couple of additional folks that came out. I guess the way that I would summarize it is that the folks to, I don't have the zoning map, but the folks to the north in the green area that we pointed out originally did have some concerns because of density. There was just a few folks that spoke against it at planning board.
And spoke in favor or against?
Against it.
Against.
Right. They're on the other side of Indian Trail Fairview, and they're in the county, and it's RA 40. So a much different picture north of this versus south of this. But planning board did unanimously approve this project.
You have a question, Sarah?
And I know it may not be important for your end, but it's three Cunningham sisters that live across the way. And I agree that they spoke, I don't know if I characterize this against, but I would never go against Brandy on this. What's ironic is then they met me afterwards right here and said, can we sell our property to you and you do the same thing there? Our problem is we haven't sold our property because we don't have sewer, which is true. The road serves as a dividing line. So I think there was a reason that we got an unanimous vote at that meeting because the Cunningham sisters, I think, acted differently after that, so.
And I guess I have one other question, Brandy. With water and sewer the way it is now, and you're talking about in the next two years, I guess you were saying, you could probably not get started probably on this for another year. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, so. So how will that rate with the water sewer situation that we're in with now?
I mean, is that from me or Brandy? I mean, we are, we will continue to go down the road. The owners are aware of the sewer situation. We're aware of the sewer situation. None of us are ignorant to it. We are continuing to work with Union County Public Works on it. If I, if you'd like, I can show you the 30-page. Information, you may want, you may not want to read it. That basically is all of the neighborhoods and who's going to get allocations, et cetera. We've been working with them. In case we were prevalent, prevailed here and moved on, we would want to make sure we have that. I think, I don't want to be, I mean, I think it's a little bit more political on their part than it is technical when you look at the numbers at this point. So it's a Union County Board dialogue at this point. I feel, well, we would have sewer in the next two years, for sure.
I'm sorry for all the questions. Go ahead. Don't be sorry.
Brandy? I have a couple of questions. So Emerald Lakes, the roundabout is right there.
Right.
Well, I'm trying to, I know that there had been.
Oh, Emerald Woods.
I mean, Emerald Woods. I'm sorry. I'm thinking of the golf. That's the roundabout, right there?
Right.
Okay.
That's Rocky River.
Right. There was, at one time, a project going in just past Philstone Farms.
Yes, correct.
Is that still?
Correct. They were actually scheduled to be on this agenda and did not submit all of their required documentation. So we'll be looking at re-noticing that and scheduling them for a future agenda. That project was called Attlee, 125 homes.
How many, 125 is that?
Correct.
And then on the other side, there was, when you were.
A project that we approved.
For.
Eight, nine years ago.
Southgate.
Yeah, Southgate. Is that, is that a, I don't know.
No.
Whatever happened to that?
It's a little ironic.
That was a huge project.
It is. It's a little ironic that you asked that question. Yeah, it actually is addressed right here on the map. We actually held a meeting today on that project. They are finishing up site plan review and had a few comments that we had to iron out. So I think that they're kind of moving forward like everyone else and getting in line to be pulled off the shelf when capacity is available. And I did just want to quickly add, there was another concern from the resident on the Greenway Trail. Her only concern was that the Greenway Trail terminates at our property. So we did add a condition to address that concern with proper signage so that folks would know, you know, this is private property and the Greenways has ended.
Anybody else have a question?
I do have a follow-up question. On that access road, the emergency access road, is that thing open all the time? Will it be open? So they would be able to use that as a gravel entrance and exit if they so choose?
If they so choose, I mean, it's, you know, once again, the reason, whether we, any of us like it or not, is for a second ingress egress is the National Fire Group came out and said they were concerned that, for instance, if someone's house was on fire, 10 houses in, and then at the same time someone had a heart attack, 30 houses in, that they would be able to get by the house on fire and have an ambulatory service. And so National Fire Code passed that down to the states and local municipalities for them to adopt at whatever number they wanted. So this is a, I think Brook Valley over on the other side of Sun Valley is a community that has a similar emergency access easement just like this one that you wouldn't even know it's grassed and it has the ability for a fire truck to drive up it all the time. It's just before the entrance to Brook Valley. They're a very similar distance from it. Just so once again, if something were to happen in those first few lots, you could get to it.
Is that, is that in the county?
That's a city project, Brook Valley.
No, 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 no. This gravel road. Is that in the county or is that in the city?
Oh, you know, that's a good question. I think that the way that they're going to have to do it is it's all going to be in the town, so.
So why not break out the asphalt and put a road there?
Frankly, because Union County Public Works doesn't want to have a road there because then that just encourages more people to drive on that road.
And DOT? That's the two reasons? Yeah.
We're wanting to use it for her.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear.
So NC DOT has distance separation requirements, typically at 600 feet. But with this being a curve, it could be even greater than that. So they just don't have the frontage that DOT would approve.
Would that pose any potential problems to the Sheriff's Department having that access road there for, you know, positive or negative?
No, it would actually be a hill.
Okay.
As long as we got a secondary access road to give it to the body of property.
Okay. That was really it. No clarification. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will open and close public comments since no one has signed up and move on to the council if there's any further discussion. If not, you'll need to make motions.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. Consistency findings. I'll make a motion to adopt the statement of consistency as read into the record for CZ 2021-0041 by staff on August 24th, 2021.
Ms. McIntyre has made a motion to find the consistency findings. All in favor by show of hands? Let the record show that was unanimous. I need a second motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request. CZ 2021-0041, ordinance number 021, sorry, that's O 210824-365.
Ms. McIntyre has made a motion to approve. By show of hands, all in favor? The record show that was unanimous. Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to old business. Is Adam around? Oh, there you are. Solid Waste.
Yep. Mayor, council will make this short and sweet tonight. We had our mandatory pre-bid meeting today for our potentially new solid waste contract. Just continuing to go through that process that we said that we were going to. We had five vendors present today, so we had a lot of good discussion back and forth between us and them. And we hope that in the next month or so, we'll get some good bids in. We just wanted to kind of keep y'all up to date as to where we were at with that process.
Questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Adam.
See, I said it would be short and sweet.
That's just because you want to go home. That brings us to a comprehensive plan update.
Thank you, council. Mayor? It's a short update for myself also. But this is a status on where the comprehensive plan is at at this moment. Earlier in the year, schedule changes were needed in order to get more input from the public. With the pandemic, we were not able to have in-person meetings, so the community survey became very important to us. As the period for the community survey was extended, it pushed our advisory committee meetings into the summer, which was a challenge for personal schedules for the committee members. To still utilize the committee during the summer, we came up with some homework assignments. And the homework assignments were for them to review the community survey results and answer a survey to provide input on the current town vision. So now, in finishing. up Phase Two, which I'll show you on a chart, we'll be with the advisory committee after that homework, reviewing the vision and goals to finish up that portion and scheduling a virtual meeting between, hopefully this week and next week to do that. That's going to be a little bit longer meeting for them. But this is the, this is where the, kind of the rubber meets the road for the committee is, is where they're going to really put their input in. Everything up to now has been mainly presentation of data collected. And now it's time to get them to do some discussion. So in finishing up Phase Two, Phase Three, scenario development will be after the advisory committee's work on the vision and goals. Then, you know, Phase Four is kind of occurring at the same time now. Phase Four began early as scheduling was difficult in the summer. So we began working on laying out the report to revise existing data information and start formatting. So to recap what's next, complete advisory committee meetings on the vision and goals, look at scenario development, complete the final draft document, and put it up for public input. So let me go to the chart here. So on the, the chart, going through Phase One and Phase Two, those dates got, got pushed out a little bit into the summer for Phase Two. Phase Three and Phase Four are kind of overlapping now. And, and so that will make things a little tight, but the goal is still for, still for November to wrap things up. And let's see if I have any other comments here. That's what I have so far.
Thank you.
Good.
I just want to thank you for your hard work. This is not easy. So thank you for all the time and effort and whole staff that's into doing something like that is very time consuming. And we have good staff. So I.
Thank you.
You're doing a good job.
And it's, it's not even a, a full rewrite. So, and I've got my hands full. So.
Thank you for all you did.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if any citizen or any board member has any questions about the plan and, you know, how they can give input, just, you know, reach out to me or Brandy and she'll filter it on over to Mr. Jones. Because we, this document is very important and we would like to have a lot of public input so that when it gets to your desk for approval, you've had the benefit of a wide variety of committee members and citizens to weigh in on it.
Quick question. What, what is the timeframe? I see November, but are, are we, are we looking to put this in front of the council, early November, late November? How long for us to approve this, to review it? Or is this maybe going to be delayed until the next council?
I would really, I, I've, I've been instructed to attempt to get this reviewed so that a decision can be made on it in November. So, yeah, it's good. Things are tight right now. But that's the goal, is to get this reviewed by the community. It would be nice to do that in October and have everything ready to do some kind of a community thing. I would prefer to have a walkthrough, to be able to have the public walk through and maybe do a hybrid where, you know, some folks don't want to come out, they can Zoom, and then expose them and get com, as many comments as we can from that, from that meeting on the draft. So it's, it's just been a challenge with trying to, you know, get through the Zoom meetings and do what we need to do. So.
And I understand. And, and yeah, I would, I would love to be the, you know, the guy that's voting on the comprehensive plan. But more importantly to me is that we do get plenty of community input, that we take our time to do this so that we, and we don't rush into it, whether or not that's on this existing council or the next council. So I just wanted to, that's why I was kind of looking, how much time would we get, being that we're working stiffs to look at this comprehensive plan? I mean, if it's, you know, it's going to be presented on a Tuesday night and we're to vote on it, that's not.
No.
Something I would look forward to.
No, no. There, there would be more time. There would be a, a document given to you ahead of time and, and a presentation I assume that we would make beforehand. So, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, what we can do is, I think, you know, Jerry makes a great point. Y'all want to have a chance to look at the document, process it. And so I would like to work with Brandy and Tim and this board to identify whether we want to have a couple workshops just, you know, like we're going to talk about with the CIP here in a little bit, where Tim can give you a lot of explanation about the plan so that you have the opportunity to weigh in. So when it gets to you for approval, you've been fully, fully versed in the plan, if that's acceptable. And they may have already programmed that in.
If I'm not mistaken, in the past, Mayor, you might want to pitch in, we've had meetings in the past with this. Well, we had the community come in and kind of make comments, show them different stations and different people, talk to them and get their input. And so, you know, I'm assuming you plan on doing that. I think you, you said you would plan on doing that. Maybe do that in October, September, September. And so we do have that, that.
Yes.
Input and move on with it. Like you said, you've been, we've been working on this a long, long time. So.
Yeah.
You know, let's, let's, let's do it. So.
The only comment I would make is, and I think we're going to be getting to it shortly, is I'm, I'm a big proponent of downtown. I'm a big proponent of the downtown project. And I know that we're, we're going to talk about hopefully a site visit to Cornelius here.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, I, I really would like to.
Okay.
To get that in as well so that we have a good plan for downtown.
We're getting ready to invest a lot of money in downtown on called Indian Trail Road. So, yeah, that's going to be an important part of it.
Any other questions for Mr. Tim here? He looks a little uncomfortable standing there staring at us.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hunsinger, Indian Trail Road update.
Mayor, Council, this is, we've been talking about the Indian Trail Complete Street for a while. So finally got some headway. Want to give you a little update on that. We will have 25% plans developed and completed by the end of September. And so the plan is to, once I have that in hand, I will start calling the business owners along that corridor. And we'll have, start having individual meetings with them to talk about the plan and what we're preparing to do in front of their properties. And while that's going on, we'll move forward with 65% plans. And once that, timeframe on that is probably going to be the first of year, probably in February-ish timeframe. So hopefully between that time and, and that being completed, you know, the business owners will be happy with what we're telling them. And, and hopefully the right-of-way acquisition process, which we'll move forward after that. And, you know, next spring, summer, hopefully runs smoothly based on those conversations. So that's the update right now for that project. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
That brings you up. Sardis Church Roundabout.
Yep. Sardis, Sardis Roundabout. Unfortunately, this has dragged on obviously longer than all of us probably wanted to. But we have finally to the finish line. We're wrapping up our last meeting with the contractor to finalize their claims. They did submit a claims report. We've reviewed it and we're making final determinations on how we move forward with that. Once that is done, we'll be able to wrap up the project, close it out, and then enter our next, our last submittal for reimbursement to the state. I'll be happy to tell you that we did finally get the first, first submittal that we submitted, which was for a total of 1.8 million. And we will get back 1.3 of that 1.8. So that should be coming. That's really all I have for that. If you have any questions.
What, what, what happened to the 500,000? We submitted 1.8, we're getting 1.3. What happened to the 500?
If I'm not familiar with 500,000, refresh my memory.
You said, we submitted 1.8. We're getting back 1.3. So there's a 500?
Yeah, we, we paid 25% of the 1.8.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're.
So we're getting 75% back. Yes, yes, sir.
All right. So there's, okay, I see what you're saying. Any outstanding issues with the contractor on that particular roadway? Any improvements, anything they need to do to that particular intersection that they, like the punch list then?
Yeah. I mean, that's all been wrapped up. Only thing we will have is a warranty, a one-year warranty, which the date hasn't been established for that yet. And then we'll come back, do a walkthrough after that timeframe. If we find anything, and obviously they'll have to button that up because we do have a bond for that improvement, for the total project cost. So they felt, if they fail to want to do anything with that warranty inspection, then we can obviously move forward in that direction to fix ourselves.
Could I answer a question?
Yes, this.
That's the greatest, one of the best things we've ever done is put that roundabout.
Yeah, it's a long time coming.
I do have one more.
Go ahead.
It's really targeted towards Captain. Captain, since this has been in place for about a year now roughly, seeing market improvement in the flow of transport, of vehicles there, the flow of transportation from the school and so forth, have you seen that, has this improved the traffic flows within that area, school and otherwise, Sardis Roundabout?
I love it.
If the captain loves it, that's it. I'm good.
And I haven't, I haven't had any, sorry, I haven't had any phone calls from the school or anything. So I've been contacted then because we did have to do an improvement to their existing fence out there along the playground. So we got that wrapped up. But beyond that, I haven't heard anything from school. So hopefully everything's going all right.
School traffic's great. Crashes have gone down. I mean, just.
Good job. I like the design. Good job.
It's great. Best, best thing to ever happen at Sardis.
All right, thank you.
Brings us to new business, vape shop text amendment. Mestes?
I agree. The roundabout changed my life. So thank you, Todd.
I agree.
Just as we came before you previously, to kind of get your thoughts on the temporary signage, we wanted to just get a little temperature gauge on another potential text amendment. Staff has noticed the number of vape shops has drastically increased over the last year or so, and many are concentrated. Our newly adopted UDO back in February, if you'll remember, does address this with distances to schools, 500 feet. So for example, there's a vape shop on Old Monroe Road across from Sun Valley High School. That one got in just before the code change. So it would be illegal, non-conforming, and not permitted today if they were to come in for permits. However, there are no, currently no requirements that would prohibit clusters within shopping centers or close proximity to one another. Therefore, placing a text amendment on the planning board agenda, we just wanted to, to get some feedback from council first before we took it that far.
I have no question. Jerry has a question. Let Jerry.
Why do we care, the free market? Why do we care to do that?
It, it has been posed, we, we've gotten complaints and concerns from citizens.
Like, for example?
Well, there's a, a cluster at the corner of Old Monroe Road. They are heavy violators code enforcement-wise with signage. We're constantly having to address signage with them over and over again. We, we've gotten complaints on the one that's so close to the high school as well, even though we've told folks that the, the code would, would fix that problem in the future. So we, we've gotten a lot of complaints on this, this land use specifically.
Complaints, signage, complaints that people don't like vape shops, complaint?
Any and all. Why, why do you have so many? You know, why do you allow it? And we, we do, we do see other codes throughout the state that limit it to, you know, all sorts of uses, but then also have distance requirements. So we're just, we're just posing the idea to see if council's interested, not, nothing further.
I'm not comfortable getting that right, lady, so.
I have a question.
Sure.
You know, I see where people complain about how many pizza places there are over on, on Monroe Road. What's the difference?
I've not heard that one.
Oh, yeah.
You have heard it. I know you have.
Get a pizza.
No, no, I really haven't.
Chicken with oil changed.
They complain about chicken on.
There's a lot of complaints about how many.
I've heard.
Places. So, but what my question is, won't that take care of itself? I mean, if you put too many vape shops or put too many pizza parlors or whatever in one area, fruition or whatever is going to take over. I mean, you know.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't personally have an opinion on this. I'm just bringing this because we have gotten a lot of complaints. But I would assume that some of the complaints is that a nuisance business, a vape shop would be considered a nuisance business, perhaps.
I agree with Jerry on that. I think.
So is the, is part of your ask, or just getting our feedback, gauging our interest, is part of it amending the text to reduce the density of the, of vape shops in one area? In other words, we can't have two-in-one plaza, or we need this and that? Or is it, we need to keep it X amount? Well, you said that the February, in, in February, we addressed this in terms of the proximity to schools, right?
Correct.
We did.
Correct.
So that is no longer a concern.
Correct.
Meaning if anything new comes in, the, the, the current ordinance on the books would address that, right?
Correct.
What you're really asking for is people have been complaining about the amount of vape shops in particular areas. Some people generally just don't like vape shops, right? But that's, you know, another matter by itself. But part of their complaint is that there's probably too much in one area.
Right, concentrated. We have gotten a lot of complaints on the one that's across from Sun Valley.
Right.
They feel like that should, you know, be legal, and it technically is today. We can't do anything about the fact that they, they came in before the, the code change. But the complaints we've gotten is the concentration of those. So, and staff, just to be perfectly clear, staff is just, is just responding to the complaints. So however council so chooses, we'll move forward.
I'm going to take an opposite approach, having three grandsons. You know, I can remember sneaking cigarettes at one point in time. So I would like to see some text amendments that would, would spread them out, reduce of signage, just in a way so that it's not as attractive to our younger generation.
I'm going to, I'm going to agree with Mike. They dress them up like they're Disneyland. And they put all the flashy lights and everything around them. And we all know, we're not stupid. We can sit here and debate it all day. That's to attract the kids when the rest of the town's businesses are not allowed to have the same types of signage. So it either needs to be consistent with the signage, or we need to remove the sign ordinance altogether. If they're allowed to put Christmas lights up 24/7 and cover their cars, so to say, I know that one was taken care of.
Right, right.
With a big, moving billboard, then Johnny Tomatoes can put his.
Correct.
Trailer out by the street every day that advertises Pizzeria. Why does Johnny Tomatoes get cited, but the vape shop doesn't?
Right. And they, we, we have had to use a lot of code enforcement resources on this business specifically and, and repeat offenders, you know, folks that, that know the rules and just refuse. So I, I agree, the signage has been, has been an issue.
I would think that's the biggest issue. Otherwise, let capitalism take care of itself as far as where people put it.
I would like to make one more comment as well in that this kind of reminds me of the issues that Kate, Kate Skates, of, of the congregation of, of people, of young people. So again, to me, that's just another reason that, that we, I would like to take a look at some text amendments.
Correct me if I'm wrong. The, there's one in the shopping center where Starbucks and Papa John's is, K-U-M-E. It's like over across from the Harris Teeter. It's very Okay, it's very nonchalant, there's a vape shop in there, is there not?
Yeah.
There is one. Very, just like every other business, you know.
Right.
They sell, they have their customers, they come in, then you have, I can drive down Indian Trail Road when New York Pizza is, and I could see his flashing lights from that one. Um, the one next to La Onica, I believe there's one.
There's, there's like three within that, that intersection.
And, um, then you have the one that's, again, next to Johnny Tomatoes, that are looking.
Correct.
Uh, the lights are there to attract the kids. I think that would be, if those weren't there and the place was just a business, I don't think anybody would really ever say anything.
Right, no, the, the one that you first spoke of, that, that could be that the, um, the shopping center and their rules have, um, have tamed them to the point where I didn't even realize they were there.
I have a question. If, if, um, are we talking about signage, or are we talking about, because I think we kind of got off the subject a little bit?
Oh, sorry.
You know, we're, we're talking about, we're not talking about signage, we're talking about whether or not we want to keep, you know, a certain business.
Right.
And telling them they can't operate a business within a certain area.
Right, and I guess the signage is added to the conversation. Um, the complaints that we've gotten are on, um, the, the signage, the, the one across from Sun Valley, and then the cluster.
Well, to finish my question, shouldn't, um, first of all, is it, is it, can we do, I guess we can do that.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, so, you know, I guess it would just be up to the council whether or not, and I, I agree with you, Mike, I agree that, you know, that, that, but, uh, again, I kind of, I kind of agree with, if you got too many in one business, it'll take care of itself because, you know, there's not enough business for everybody. It's, it's kind of tough to, to say one certain legal business, you can't, you can't do, you can't go there, so, that's just my opinion, but. Just so, why don't we just do something about the signage? Why don't, why don't we, if, if they have signage up there that's not there, why can't, why can't we find them and, and, and get them to stop doing it?
We are as hard as we can, like I say, we're, we're really spending too much time on vape signage and, and, and not, you know, forsaking other things, um, so we, we are addressing it. Um, they've, you know, some of the, the vape shops have decided to work around our hours and put them up on weekends, and, um, so we, we're working as hard as we can to address it.
And what are other names for vape shops? I, I don't, I mean, there, there's got to be other names.
Tobacco.
Uh, maybe a tobacco shop.
That's all they ever put up there, tobacco.
Or what, what is the one, uh, uh, that's over by the A B C store?
Oh, the old, the old A B C store?
Yeah, it was.
Or is that still, no, it's still there?
No, the new, the, the.
The, the one over there, right, I'm thinking, Buddha, right?
Four, there, there's one right there by the party.
Is that called Buddha?
I don't, I'm not sure that's even called a vape shop, so.
Mayor seems to know all of them.
Yeah, I mean, I've just, I'm, I'm photographing.
I just wanted to point that out, the mayor seems to know every name.
Name something, I'll know where it is.
Well, that's good, that's good, the mayor knows where.
I mean, I, I think that's it, either Buddha's a, the vape shop, or it's a consignment shop.
Yeah.
Smoke shop?
Head shop. It's a head. Okay, thank you, Thomas, so you can call it a head shop, so, so where do you, how do you differentiate?
Well, they, they can call their business whatever they want to, but we're going to look at the actual land use of what's going on there day-to-day, regardless of what they call it.
Right, and I'm not sure if that's even a vape shop, I, I don't, I'm not, I don't know.
Let's just move on, I, I think you've got your marching orders or what.
It seems like maybe there's not a consensus really to move forward, so we can.
Raise your hand.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
If you're not in favor of this, raise your hand.
Not in favor of what?
Uh, the text amendment, to limit.
What is the text amendment?
Ah.
To provide distances, and, and this is, we haven't drafted language because we didn't want to remotely go that far if council isn't even interested.
Based on what she said, no.
She's, you're asking for our interest level.
Right, right.
A consensus of council is what you're asking.
Are you even interested in this remotely?
I'm not, I'm not.
Marcus?
Uh, I'll go with Mike, I'll, I'll take a look, let's see what you can come back with, so, we have two, two here.
Yeah, let's see what you can come back with, but what I'd like included in that before everybody shoots it down is, um, are there.
I'll, I'll get it.
Are there, um, anything in regards to specifically, um, laws or statutes and required with controlled substances like now?
So, so any land use, you have to be careful at how you separate it out, and that's why you have, you can do the easiest way, and Karen can correct me if I'm wrong, is distances from churches and schools, or distances from one, uh, locations, the same locations, is the safest way to, to do that?
Mr. Mayor, as I've listened to the conversation, I'm hearing it on two fronts, one is distance and one is signage. And there are different opinions on that from what I'm seeing with the board. Might I suggest if y'all want to move forward with something that you can eventually approve or not approve, give staff the flexibility to look at both aspects of.
Well, the signage, the signage is already addressed, it's just an enforcement, a constant enforcement issue.
So a question on that enforcement, um, and they're being fined, is that correct?
It depends on the situation, it depends on whether they're in the right-of-way, whether they're on private property, um, it, it really depends.
Well, I, I, I know, for instance, that if I'm speeding five miles and over, and it's not going to cost me nothing, no big deal, but if I know I'm speeding, you know, again and again and again, and it starts costing, every time they ding me, I get hit, and it amplifies.
Yeah.
Would, could that be a consideration in this discussion?
So, uh, the problem is, is, and we're looking, we're waiting on the municipal code, uh, to be completely overhauled, but we've had since February a draft that would address repeat offenders. Um, so we're a little bit limited in that we don't have anything to address repeat offenders right now, um.
Bless you.
Could that be part of this conversation, would that be timely?
It, it's already drafted and waiting on the rest of the municipal code, I've been waiting since February, so it's, it's already a part of a, a drafted ordinance that's been reviewed.
Then part of this, um.
For, for, just for the repeat offender through code enforcement.
See, again, you're talking about signage.
Right, if you can bring both of them back, you know, whatever your ideas are back.
Well, the sign, again, the signage is, is addressed.
Sinage is not, not something that, that we deal with, but I don't have a problem saying, keep it away a certain distance from a school, or a certain distance from, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, and I think that, to me, that's fine. Uh, just to say you can't open up a business here, and you can't open up another one like it, is no different than opening up a pizza place here, and if you go down Monroe Road, just to me, that you've got five pizza places within, you know, a square block of each other. So, I mean, so you're telling one business they can do it, and one business you can't, so that, that's, that's the only thing I'm, I'm saying. But if we, but I would say, just in my opinion, that you could keep it away from a school, or a church, or whatever you want to keep it from, so.
Is that already addressed?
I have a problem with that.
It's five hundred feet from a school is what the existing code says right now.
Got you, that's what it says now.
Correct.
Well, okay, so.
I guess we're good then.
Okay, thank you.
So, wait a minute, what, what's the final thing, is it?
That's what I'm wanting, which direction or.
Coming back, I mean, you, you said that, I think.
Oh, yeah, no, she's coming back.
It sounds like it's going to be a very fun discussion when we bring it back.
Trying to figure out where we stood on this, all right, thank you.
Sorry, no, it was already, sorry, thought I said that to you already, Marcus.
No worries.
Well, beautification regarding Highway seventy-four, oh.
You get to see my smiling face again tonight. Um, so, if you remember back, I don't know, early budget season, so let's think March, maybe April of this year, that'd be mid-budget season, we talked a little bit about some future projects, some things to think about going down the road future. One of those that we talked about was Highway seventy-four and beautification. We talked about, you know, now that the bypass is completed, and you drive through Stallings, and it's, you know, nice and lit, and you kind of can see where you're driving at, then you come down, kind of drop off the bypass, and you drop into Indian Trail, and it just kind of goes dark again. It kind of, you, you lose any of that depth that you have, or, and then you start getting the lights from the businesses as a distraction maybe on the roadway some. So we've heard, uh, Captain James has reported about some of the crashes on Highway seventy-four, and how some of them have gone down since they've stopped, since they've restricted some of those right-hand turn lanes, and now that it's a little bit slower speeds at the intersections when you're making those movements. Another way to help with traffic and to help with some safety is to add streetlights. So one thing we'd like to start kind of progressing down, it's nothing y'all need to raise your hand on today and say yes or no to, is actually a full street lighting program that would run the full distance of Highway seventy-four. So that would be from, uh, where you come into Indian Trail, lack of a better term, when you drop off of the bypass, all the way through the Honda dealership on the Monroe side is roughly town limits. There are a few streetlights on seventy-four now, but they're sporadically placed and have just probably been there as a business grew up or as something got placed. The other side of it we'd like to think about doing is si, entry signage on each side, not just our little signs that say, hey, this is Indian Trail, you know, the, the green signs, but an actual, like, placemaking sign that says, you're now in Indian Trail. Another project that's ongoing is Todd's, uh, project for the pedestrian ten-foot walkway on seventy-four to connect kind of across town, that's a longstanding project. So kind of taking a three-headed approach to kind of beautify that area a little bit.
Consensus?
Yes, but you got a question down there?
So seventy-four is owned by the state.
It is.
D O T. They don't clean it sometimes because of funding, but then we're asking to take our taxpayers' money and light it, right, the town, and then we would have to continue paying that bill. Now, I see the benefit of the lights, but the thing is to light a road that the state owns, that's, because the thing is, we pay taxes for gas and other things.
Yep.
Primarily through the gas tax, in order for them to take care of the roads, and they barely do that. So that's where my concern comes in, is that, taking, we have roads that we'd like to, I mean, Jerry will tell you, he can name all the roads in town that needs to be fixed. So we have all that, but then in addition to that, that's where my concern comes up, is that using the tax dollars to put lights on the road that the state owns. So that, that's where, I mean, have we explored any partnership, or have we inquired to D O T in terms of lighting that road, help reduce crashes?
So we've talked to them in the past, no time recently, about putting streetlights on seventy-four into them, I'll go back to their old adage that they always say they are in the business of moving cars.
If, if I could add, we've had a recent discussion with Mr. Goodnight, and that subject was brought up, and I think they have some sort of grant program. Um, I think I've known other cities that had occupancy tax, and this is not necessarily a spin for occupancy tax, which may have used some of their money for streetlights on the interstate. The situation you described, Mr. Mayor Protem, is, is not unusual, um, where the state will build the road, but a lot of times they don't build, in my personal opinion, the necessary safety enhancements of lights to go along with it. But I would be deeply concerned for one of my family members driving down seventy-four and having a flat tire breaking down, um.
So, yes, legitimate and valid concerns.
Yeah.
The funding mechanism is, is a question, because it's diverting funds that we could possibly use on roads to, meaning to widen, repair, Indian Trail Road being a primary example, Chestnut Parkway Extension being another example, so. These are, I just wanted to raise that, I'm not saying, I am not saying no.
Yep.
I'm saying, good point, but let's also look at the road improvements that we need to make, because, I mean, we, we, you know, as an entity, we're putting a lot of money to the state roads, and Monroe Road being part of it, five million dollars of the taxpayers' money going towards constructing a state-owned road, and the final design is not even what our residents want, so.
So, I'll speak about kind of the cost, because you were kind of talking about that, so streetlights, when we install larger streetlight projects, usually there is no upfront cost to the town. The town signs an agreement with Duke Power or Union Power, whichever entity it is, and we pay off that agreement over the next five to ten years, and then after that, it's just the cost of the, whatever the cost of the light is, ten dollars a light, fifteen dollars a light, whatever that number is. So for a project like this, there would be no upfront cost. Now, we've got to work with D O T on that, if we choose to go down this route, because of the roadway that it is, what they'll have to do is what they call a photometric plan, and they'll work with Duke Power, they have to make sure that the light level stays the same down the whole road, everybody has to sign off on it. So if we, if I had a consensus tonight, yes, we want to kind of start looking down that road, this isn't something that we're going to do right now, and it's not something that we honestly would do by the end of the year, we're probably looking a year, two years out before anything, you would see like a physical light on the roadway.
That's all my questions.
Okay, anybody else have a question?
So the other side of that was the beautific, was the signage side, that is something that, that would just be on the town, now we would have to have encroachment agreements or anything like that, unless if we can get the signs outside of the right-of-way from seventy-four. But that, that's two, it's two different, uh, items.
So you're talking the monument signs, I suppose?
Yep, monument signs.
Um, yeah, I don't really have much interest in that, but I do have interest in what it would cost and to do a streetlight improvement program out there on Monroe Road, or any, any of the roads that are heavily trapped, traveled around here. I know, I mean, I'm older, my eyes are starting to change, or have been changing, it's been, um, it's difficult driving down that road with all of the varying lights coming at you and no over, no overhead lights to really get a, a good sense of where you are. So to me, it's a really safety and a security component to this, um, more so than the beautification. I would be interested in, you know, as much information, the grants, uh, what is a cost per pole, if there's such a thing, um, you know, just some more information on the financial side.
I can give you a back-of-napkin number, if you don't hold me to numbers. We had Duke Power just tell us, okay, the total distance is this long, that would be this many lights in ballpark, you'd be looking at less than five thousand dollars a month to light all of seventy-four. Does that give you ballpark figures?
So five thousand dollars a month?
In perpetuity.
So the cost to the town per month would be five thousand dollars?
Less than, the number's actually less than that, but I'm just telling, I'm estimating higher.
Yeah.
Let's take a look at it.
I'm, I'm just, that's for a ballpark fee, and we, we pay for all streetlights around town in subdivisions and, on any road right now, we pay for the streetlight if it's lit. And if it's not lit.
If all you're doing is going to give, come back and give us a price on it, there's.
We need, we need to kind of go through a plan process to be able to, you know, but it's going to take time to get that done, and we just didn't want to.
You just gave us the, 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 the five thousand.
A pretty rough figure, that, that's just them.
So no upfront cost, no upfront cost of, I mean, we took a big giant step forward, now we have an idea of what it costs, maybe you told us before, and I just wasn't listening.
No, I didn't tell you.
So, so, yeah, I, I'm agreeing, I would like to see the numbers, but the five thousand you're talking about, that's just the lighting cost, that's not the actual physical pole.
Yep, so they, they lump all of their cost into one figure, so, a subdivision light, in any of our subdivisions, depending on which lighting style is, usually they're somewhere between ten and fifteen dollars a light per month. Uh, roadway lighting, if it's L E D, it's one price, if it's old sodium fixtures, it's a different price, price, if it's on a metal pole versus a wood pole, it's different prices. Um, so all of their, they have a set price per unit that includes the pole, the light, um, everything, that makes them be responsible for going out to fix it. So if I get a phone call that a street light's out, we then put it in whichever power company system it is, they then go out and do that repair, but we don't get a bill for that repair, because it's just lumped into their everyday cost for streetlights.
Yeah, well, for five thousand dollars, that, that doesn't sound bad at all, I mean, I, I think we might have been thinking a million dollars to, to put all this up, and.
I expected to hear, I expected the two-point something million.
And I, I tell you, knowing that, I wish we'd look at other areas of town.
Well, and that's.
That, that, because, you know, I don't see like I used to, you know, so, and I'm sure everybody struggles to see at night sometimes, and, uh, that's one of the biggest complaints that I have, is that, you know, it's, it's dark, and there's a lot of dark areas in our town, and maybe we could do something about lighting up, uh, the whole town for fifteen thousand dollars, you know, or whatever, twenty thousand, or, or, I think it's a good idea.
We've started working more with, uh, Union Power than Duke Power, is we have roadway lights that need. lights that need to be repaired. We've started replacing those more with LED fixtures because they do provide a little bit better light. They provide a better light quality just on the roadway and not your overflow lighting that you have sometimes. I'll use your location because you're close to major roads. You know, it helps with that. We can pinpoint where the light goes, keep it from shining in your eyes driving down the road. So we're working, trying to work with them as they make those repairs and update things.
Yeah, I would like to see this council, and maybe we can get something started for the whole town, not just 74.
Can we move this on? Is everybody okay with looking at it?
You're going to hurry, Mike?
No.
But, I mean, you know, we can move it on, but I'm, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like that.
David would like you to bring back the rest of the town at a meeting.
We can bring it, we can-
That is not David. Does anybody else?
I'll support it, David. I'll support it.
Yeah.
I think Mike wants to move it on, too.
I'm not only supporting that, but I would support.
Everybody supports it, and everybody would like to know different sections of town.
We can work through it in chunks. It's going to, you know, take us a while to get there. Maybe we'll come up with a plan, how we'll kind of phase our way through it, too. So, we'll be back. Thank y'all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Brings us to the manager's update.
And Adam, good report. Adam actually gave us a lead-in that you may or may not be familiar with when he talked about planning. And if you remember, one of the things I want to talk to you about tonight is the CIP or Capital Improvement Plan. And if you remember, when we did the budget last spring, we had that included in the board desire to pull that apart and wait to the summer to have some more discussion. Well, now we're at the late part of the summer, we're going to have some new board members. And so the question is, do we continue to keep the train moving? And I think we should. What I would like this board to do is to agree to, let's have a workshop to do two simple things. One, we have a draft sheet that we have been working on for a five-year CIP. I'd like us to take a look at that, at the workshop, and there's several projects in there that we're waiting for guidance. We're kind of still in the water, just waiting to say, do we do it or not? Other projects, if you'll notice on there, you've already funded, and there's really no action needed on your part. So I want to get some direction on those particularly that we're sitting in the water on. The second thing I would recommend that the board do is to also think about how do we engrain the new board members, which, whoever they are, after the election into the capital improvement process, so that we can do this earlier. There's a lot of thought and debate. Whether we have this board or new board members or whatever, the world's going to continue to turn. Things are going to continue to change. And I can tell you from 40 years of experience, we've got to get ahead of the curve. It's not the same Indian Trail it was in 1990, just like Kannapolis is not the same Kannapolis it was when Mr. Charlie Cannon ran the mills. So I think it would really help the staff if the board is interested in having basically a two-hour workshop one night or on a Saturday. If I could get consensus, we'll ask Madam Clerk to set that up.
You're talking about after the election, correct?
I would actually start to, like to do it before the election, but we could have some follow-up after the election. And let, let me tell you why, David, and that's a good question. My experience, and as you know, I've done this for a long, long time, is once we get new board members on, I mean, this, many of them have told me it's being hit like a fire hose. And once we get the new board members on, we're already going to be, start working on next year's budget. But I would suggest we at least have this workshop, and then maybe after the election, we have another one with the new board members, even though they haven't taken office yet, just to kind of have that discussion, so that when they take office, then they have been briefed accordingly.
So you're talking about having a, a, a meeting with all the candidates?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay. All right. What I'm talking about is this initial workshop I would like to have with the six of you.
Gotcha. Okay.
So that we can get some direction. And let me give you an example. One of the things that we haven't gotten any direction on right now is land for the Public Works Building. We've talked about it for about six months now. And land prices are going up. And if we delay another six months or another year, you know, we're going to have to spend some more money. So we, we just need to get some direction. We need to help shape the future of where this city needs to be at a minimum of five years down the road. I'll also mention to you, having a good CIP or Capital Improvement Plan, recognizing that the future years are kind of flexible, but where you plan what your needs are and you plan how to fund it, it's just good basic financial management that's highly recommended by the Local Government Commission and the State Treasurer. Tomorrow morning at about 10 o'clock or so, we're going to be talking to Standard and Poor's in Moody. These are the underwriters that are going to set our bond rating, which will determine how much, you know, we will get charged as we go to sell those bonds. And one of the questions they gave us, a two or three-page questionnaire that we had to fill out, and one of those questions talked about the CIP, where are we on our CIP? And talking to our financial advisors, one of my personal desires is to see this town get a AAA bond rating. There's very few of them in North Carolina. North Carolina has more than probably any other state in the union. But one of the things the financial advisor shared with us is, as the town grows and as the town changes, and as the town takes on more and more capital projects, their ability to show that they can define those projects, fund those projects, and complete those projects will be so very important as we assess the financial strength of the town. I think the last point I'll make on this, of why it's very important, is if you remember, last December or so, I put together a three-page memo on the audit. And last year was the first year in recent memory. You've had an audit presentation. We've had some discussion. One of the things that the auditor looks at and others look at is, is the town investing in yourself? Just to quickly remind you, everything that the town owns, with the exception of land, is set up on a depreciation schedule. Part of that value helps determine the net asset value of the town. So I've probably gone on longer than I should have about the importance of the CIP, but Mr. Mayor, I hope that, that you and the rest of the board will agree that we do need to set some time aside before the election, and then we can set it after the election. So I'm just looking for direction. Would you like Madam Clerk to set something up?
Okay.
Are you, what does the board think, Saturdays or?
I think a Saturday morning's fine.
Yeah. So I'm just going to state that I am an active father, and Saturdays are not good for me. But, but I do want us to meet.
Okay.
So with, what I'll do, Ms. Clerk, I'll give you a few Saturdays that I am available. And therefore, but I don't want, I don't want the board not to meet because of me. I mean, and I'm just one of six. I'd like to participate, but I still think it's something that we need to do. I do agree with the manager. Let's look at it real soon on, and then go from there. But Kathy, I'll, I'll give you the, the days that I can make it, and if it lines up, great. If it doesn't, so I can spend some time, if you, Mike, and-
Yes, sir.
Get filled in.
Yes, sir.
Can you share that with all of us? Because I only have like a couple Saturdays that are bad.
Oh, well, yeah.
Through the end of the year, and that way we could all-
Sure, I'll, I'll share.
Your poll?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then, great. Thank you.
And if any board members have, have any specific questions, I think you know that I'm available to sit down and we'll, we'll talk through it. If I can't answer it, I'll bring the right staff members in that can. And thank you for that. I mean it from the bottom of my heart. State budget, House did their budget. Senate's budget is not necessarily aligned with the House budget. If you read the EJ, the local paper, they said we're getting $10 million for, I guess, Old Monroe Road. Is that right, Mr. Mayor?
Indian Trail Road.
Yeah. There was also an article, we were getting $250,000 for parks, but I couldn't find it in the budget book. So we have reached out to Representative Ark to see if we could find out if the story was in error or not. We are, they are doing their reconciliation, and hopefully everybody will agree there'll be a budget, you know, September or October. We were complimented by the League of Municipalities for some work that y'all did very recently, when you invited the local delegation to come via Zoom, if you remember that, just to talk about what they were working on. And I can't emphasize enough the need for having a good partnership with your local delegation. Doesn't mean we'll always agree, but at least we are talking. Last meeting, I think Councilmember Head brought up a desire to go to Cornelius. I know that various members are, are interested in that. The folks in Cornelius were available on September 29th. I think that is a Thursday. I believe that's right.
Wednesday, so.
Wednesday. I stand corrected, Wednesday. They were not available on Saturday, Jerry. I did, I did ask about that. And, you know, the, the takeaway from that is Cornelius is kind of like you. You've got a really busy road not too far away. And in 1980-something, I did a project for the police department. They had four officers. And I've watched that town grow and have to change and have to adapt to that growth. And the staff would be available to talk about some of that. So we will put that out. If you're interested, you know, we'd love to have you. Brandy brought up some good comments on the Muni code update. We are waiting to get a draft back. They had promised us to have it back by Friday. The attorney, I think, had some family issues that he had to deal with. However, because the vape code update is already pretty much ready, as I understand, if the board would like, we can schedule that for approval at a separate meeting outside the Muni code. And that might help some of the things, I think, that maybe Brandy brought up. So hearing no objection, we'll proceed on that direction. Last thing, Todd Barber asked me to talk about the rabies clinic. I think that's been talked about. And every two weeks, you get a manager's report. It generally comes out about 6:00 on a Friday evening. And one of the things we do at the first part is we talk about some upcoming events. I'm not going to read it word for word, but do want to remind you, there's a ribbon cutting this Thursday. We'll be closed on September 6th for Labor Day. If you want to roll up your sleeve and get blood, we've got a place for you across the street. And the mayor, you may want to have some comments on the September 11th, the celebration on September 11th. So that's all the information I have. If there's not any more questions, I'll be happy to sit down.
Yep, I guess you're good.
Mr. McIntyre.
Oh, comments. Meeting lasted a little bit longer than I anticipated, but I think it was a good meeting, good bit of information. I think the next time we meet, what is the next time we meet?
September 14th.
September 14th, all right. So I, I know, Mr. Manager, you just mentioned September 11th. I remember that day very well. It's very vivid in my imagination. I actually, the job that I had at that time required me to, every 10th of the month, I had to send a package out to some investors, and there's, a lot of them were in the World Trade Center. So in the morning, when I was trying to get in touch with them, because of the package I sent the night before, phone lines were busy, and I found it strange. But the thing is, we had no TV in the office that I, I was in, and then found out that, about the planes and so forth. So, you know, so they have remembrance. A lot of things have happened since then. We've changed the way that we get into, get on an aircraft and so forth. But please keep the people who rushed into the buildings in your prayers and thoughts, their families. Some of them did suffer some health issues after that. Staff, thank you very much for a good meeting, always keeping us prepared and having us here. And everybody, have a good evening. Thank you.
Mr. Morse.
No comments tonight.
Mr. Head.
Piggybacking on, on 9/11, we always need to remember this. There were actually four different, two planes flew into New York. We had, the Pentagon got hit, and then Shanksville in Pennsylvania, where I think if I remember correctly, they knew that something had happened. And they, they figured out that there was a hijacking going on, man. So, you know, whoever went and, and took care of that were true heroes. So let's don't ever forget 9/11. With that, everybody have a good evening.
Mayor Alvarez.
Couple of quick things. I just want to clarify something for public comments. It is a requirement of the Town of Indian Trail that you write your name and your address and a subject matter that you're going to speak about. And that's fair and transparent for all who come. Certain individuals seem to not want to write their name, want to use phony names, use titles, and skirt the system. It's not fair to everyone else. And the other part of that would be, yes, there was a proclamation of unity and peace that I read and joined in with the rest of Union County in regards to the aftermath of the unfortunate and tragic death of George Floyd. But that wasn't what that email was about. That email was about why were we, why was there a proclamation for that and not an individual in Colorado that shot another individual who was going to rob a store and save someone's life? Granted, loss of any life is tragic, and we should honor those who put, who give their lives for anyone else in any other situation. But the Colorado incident was not here, and it was not something brought up from other communities and asked for to join in. Unfortunately, it was not something we even knew about. And I, you know, to piggyback on Mr. Bear, I'd be more than happy to do a proclamation for all heroes that give their life for others that we don't know about across this nation, across the world, that put themselves in the line of fire for others to save an innocent person, run out in front of a car to save a child, whatever it might be. But we, unfortunately, we can't honor each individual person. And the cities in Colorado and the state of Colorado honored that individual and honored them appropriately. So sometimes, you know, especially in Indian Trail, when it gets near election time, people tend to want to let the politics get above the content of what's supposed to be going on. And that was that. On another note, unfortunately, Capital Jeep of Indian Trail, who's been a great partner with this town, the owner, Charles Hutto, who's never said no to Indian Trail, provided vehicles, sponsored our fireworks year after year, has been a very good friend of mine through the years, and never said no when someone came to him for help, suddenly passed away Saturday, and at the young age of 56. If we would keep his family in our prayers and at, at this time. And piggybacking on 9/11, unfortunately, it's such tragic occurrences that unite a people. Can we, it would be a great tribute to those who perished that day, both in the buildings, first responders, PTSD, suicides, however they perished because of that day. The honor would be to remember that we don't need to have a tragedy to unite us. All it takes is for us to smile, say hello to somebody, meet somebody new, understand and acknowledge the differences between us, and respect that and celebrate it. And that's what makes America great. Put down your electronic devices. Get to know people, again. People are, are good. It's what we put on social media that's not. That being said, everybody wants to go home, and everybody have a blessed evening, and God bless. I need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Cohen.
Oh, Mr. Cohen, we forgot about him. Because you usually have me last. See, you messed with the, you messed with it.
The attorney said she wanted to save the best for last, so.
Well, yeah, you got me there, David. That's because I'm not a whole person anymore.
No, I just want to thank staff for doing a great job. And I don't always say this, but they, they do do a fabulous job. I have a comment quick- I have a, a comment quickly for the town manager. Let's put a lot of these things on, let's quit discussing a lot of these things up here and put them on, let's put them up here and vote for, for like land use and that type thing. We can talk about it, but we've been, like you said, we've been talking about it for, for six months or so. Let's, let's just vote on it. Let's, let's get it. And one thing too, I see there's at least three people in here that are running for council. I, I would like to say, let's don't put things off for the new council. Let's get as much accomplished as we can to make their job easier when it's time for, for them and explain to them, you know, what, you know, why, why we do things. A lot of times councils want to put off, well, we'll just let the, the new council do it. And use your experience, because you, you do. You guys have a lot of experience. You know, you know, we disagree on things, but then again, we agree on other things. And tonight, we kind of were split on different things. But let's get a lot of these things, let's get our i's dotted, our t's crossed, and make your jobs, when you come in, to be the easiest it can be. I remember when I first came up here 10 years ago, and I didn't have a clue what I was doing up here. So, and I don't mean that in a bad way. You think you do, but, but you don't until you get up here. And I've learned a lot, and, and I used to be afraid to talk. Now, I wish, they want me to shut up. So anyway, let's make the job easier. Let's get as much done as we can in the next, next few months so we can make their job an easier job. And speaking of 9/11, I think everybody remembers where they were 9/11. But say a prayer for me. I'm, I'm going to be in New York on 9/11. I'll be getting on an airplane, coming back to, to Charlotte. So I thought about it. So it's not exactly what I want, but I just, it's just something that I have to be there. So I'm coming back on the 11th. And I have all the confidence in the world that, that, that we're going to be safe. And hopefully that'll never happen again. But thank y'all, love you for coming, and I look forward to seeing you again next time.
David. Motion.
You got a motion? Can I have a motion to adjourn? Is that what you're looking for? Okay, you got it.
Mr. Cohen's made the motion to adjourn. I'll show hands. Unanimous, meeting adjourned.